Still trying to get sent in.
Oh, no, I said we'll see.
You have to see that.
I don't have.
Can you hear us out there?
Well, Robert Mohammed.
Yes. So we're sitting here. Okay.
Okay, we're good to go.
Yes.
Is. Are the other commissioners in attendance connected already? I only see anyone he says online. But he's just getting on. And I see Earl online.
You're just missing Commissioner.
Is Commissioner Quintana and Casalos in attendance?
Yes.
I don't see him on screen here.
There is good.
You can probably see the. Our Zoom camera of the whole chamber.
And Commissioner. Log in. So it will be there.
Shall we give her a couple of minutes?
But you guys can start. I'm just going to be walking.
Not a vice chair, you're good to go.
In here.
And that's it?
Yeah. The right angle to share.
We don't, we don't hear you there, Vice Chair.
Can you hear me?
We got you. All right.
Got it. Thank you.
Just made your host.
Mr. Chair, this party to the method agenda up.
I see it. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. We'll go ahead and call this March 10th. A meeting of the planning, the zoning. Commission to order. Director Hussein, can you call the role please?
I don't have access.
Commission Chair, this one is.
Present.
Commissioner, but any somebody is. Commissioner, any somebody is.
He's muted.
Vice Chair. Vice Chair Martinez.
Commissioner, any somebody is.
We're, we're calling the role, Vice Chair.
I don't think she can hear you.
And can you hear us?
Buddy's under.
I think. Audio.
We, we see she's present, so if you want to move on.
Yes.
And we'll work, we'll work with her on your audio as you go.
Commissioner.
As a.
Mister Wright.
President.
Commissioner Quintana.
Present.
We should because all this. Commissioner Saudi. She's not present, so we have the course.
Thank you, Director. Uh, for those of us not present, can you uh let us know who is attendance in the chamber? And on Zoom.
We do not have attendees on the Zoom, but we do have public and private chambers.
Okay. Do you have a, a list of attendees that you could read?
We have Michael Salazar, you have Dennis, you have Rebecca. Maury. So Fredo, my stuff. Victor Salazar. Ben and then Matthew orders. About from you, Lucia Salazar. Lucia Sanchez, you all this.
Thank you, Director.
All right.
We'll move on to uh agenda item number three, pledge of allegiance. Commissioner, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
United States of America. For which it stands, one nation under God. In this law, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Quintana. We'll move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff, Director?
Commissioner, be you.
Yes, Director.
There was no motion.
He's asking if there's any changes from that.
There are no change from that.
Okay. Commissioners, any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ray.
Again, there is an agenda, an amended agenda. Proposed amended agenda on the screen. This is tabling two cases under Roman numeral seven. It's Roman numeral seven dot three and seven dot four. Which is case number. Twenty twenty-two dash four. Uh, will be tabled until April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And case number twenty twenty-two dash five has been thrown until further notice.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. There any other changes from the commission?
No.
Director, like to call the role, if you like to approve as amended? Or I'm sorry, we did, we did. Commissioner Ray.
I'll second your motion, if that was a motion, if that I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, we'll, we'll take your motion, Commissioner Ray, move. To approve the agenda as amended, we have a second.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a second roll call, Director Hussein.
All right. Commissioner. Right?
In favor of motion.
Commissioner, we here.
In favor of the motion.
Commissioner, any somebody is.
You're in favor of the motion.
Commission Chairman, Mr. Martinez.
In favor.
Commissioner.
In favor.
I should have so. Much less fast.
Thank you, Director. All right, we'll move on to item number five, public comments and business from visitors. Uh, this is the part of the agenda that's. That's for any comment or business or any items not on the agenda. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak? To any items not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, hearing none. We'll move on to item number six. Items table from prior meeting. And we have nothing under that particular agenda item. So we'll move on to items, item number seven, items for consideration, business, public hearing. First item. So for the following cases, we got two cases tonight. Uh, the fine cases are quasi judicial in nature. And the hearing will be conducted under provisions required by the New Mexico Court of Appeal. This includes the identification of parties. And the swearing in of all those who wish to provide testimony. The opportunity of cross examination to ask questions will be, be provided to all parties. And so just for the uh folks that are in attendance tonight. Normally how we proceed uh with our commission procedures is that we will identify parties who. Are going to speak on any of the cases here tonight. I will have to swear you in. A staff will present first. And then the parties will present following staff. At that time, we'll be able to cross examine parties, the commission can ask questions. Uh, the applicants can ask questions. Will be asked questions. Uh, and we'll also have staff have the opportunity to ask questions as well. So that's the cross examination part of it. So we'll provide some direction as we move along. Uh, but I just wanted to let you know how the flow of these meetings will be conducted. All right, for each um. Commissioners, oh, I'm sorry, let's go ahead and open. The public hearing for item number seven. Case number twenty twenty-two dash two. Request for transfer and ownership of street public right away. Residents of the sub subdivision, Laca are requesting transfer. Are requesting to transfer the ownership of the circle to the residence. So at this time, we'll request any disclosure of any conflicts of interest or extracity communication. Commissioners, is there anyone who has, who has a conflict of interest? Or that has had extracity communication related to this case? So I'm hearing none, I will disclose that I used to be a prior resident of this subdivision. I no longer hold any property uh interest currently. Uh, I did attend a HOA meeting in which prior director Hubler made a presentation on this case. So I just wanted to disclose that I have no further. Conflicts related to this case because I have no uh current ownership in the area. Uh, thank you, Commissioners. All right, uh, Mr. Hussein. Will need to identify parties related to this case and use swearing in. Can you help me to identify the parties present that will be speaking on this tonight?
Yes, there are a few probably owners. That are present, so I'm not too sure if we are going to swear and sing one by one or all at once.
Let's go ahead and swear in everybody at once.
So everybody can just raise their hands. Whoever are connected with this Los Arbores Circle case.
And if you could also swear yourself in as well, Director.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? Thank you.
Say, I swear. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I heard some runnings out there, I wasn't. Sure if everybody was a.
We got.
Thank you, Commissioner Ray. All right. We'll go ahead and allow staff to present the case report, Director Hussein.
Good evening, members of the commission. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to present this case. This case is pending for a few. Years. This subdivision was developed in two thousand one. Robert, can you bring that case to the speaker? This subdivision was actually subdivided in two thousand one. And this subdivision was, and, and the residents of the subdivision was under, were under the impression that this street, which is Los Arbores Circle. Was a private street and they gave this community and restricted access. Restricted access.
All right, that was my bad. You should be good now.
But they put a, a gate and restricted the community, but in two thousand nineteen, I believe that. So in two thousand nineteen, I believe they had some issues with the gate and they wanted to install a commercial scale gate and as a part of the process, they got a. Development permit from the city, which city realized that this is actually a public street, not a private street anymore. So they were asked to allow access to the general public as well. So what they did. They put the, the, the key. Code access on the gates, so anybody whoever wants to go in there can, can access the gate. But the community wants to get the ownership of the street. Because they truly believe that's, that is very important for their safety. And for the building of the community because they were, they had had some issues in the community of stealing and breaking in. So they want to transfer the ownership of the street. We had a DRT view. And actually they had certain several meetings and one of that one that you mentioned. With the previous administration, the previous uh planning director in last year. They were given, actually they were given temporarily. Right to keep the gate operating with the certain conditions of being the key code access on that, so everybody can access the gate. But now they want the complete ownership of the street. And they understand that there, there will be, there are city perspective utilities. So they will give an ease me to the city. Which they, since this is a public infrastructure, it cannot be transferred to any private party. And we had a DRT review meeting, we had a conversation with our land use attorney. And all those recommendations are the part of your package. But I stand here for any questions.
Thank you, Director Hussein. Are there any questions from the commission at this time? Commissioner Ray.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Has the DRT made any recommendations on this, the, the city's development review team?
Yes, they're, they're a part of the package. So they're.
Record, what were the record and dates?
So the, the fire department was twenty-four by seven access. And public works department. Was then recommended that they cannot grant an access to, I mean, they would not transfer the utilities. Because city did not allow any private party to tap into our sewer or water. Water infrastructure without any permission or supervision of the city, of our staff. Which are in there. As a part of your package. But there was a community concern that I, I wanted to mention for the record that there were some leading loopholes that they want to. That they have want the stakeholders to fix before this ownership is transferred. But I had a conversation with the street department and the street department mentioned. That since they have been treating it as a private street for last twenty years. So they are the actual who owners of the street. But I also wanted to mention that they spent almost ten thousand dollars to fix that road. And they paved the road with asphalt. So and they understand that they will be maintaining and repairing it there. As any other road of the private property they do.
Thank you. And um, did the city's land use attorney give you an opinion on this case?
Yes, I, I mentioned in our staff memo, so this is actually a private, this is a public street that, and it is actually an asset of, of the city. So the land use attorney had an opinion, since this is an asset, this if needs faster without any. Consideration, it could be a violation of anti-donation act clause of state of New Mexico. So just wanted to put out there.
Thank you.
But he also mentioned that this, this, this particular road, because it is a road, do not have a lot of, of money value because it is a road.
Thank you, Director. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Ray. Commissioner Quintana.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've seen throughout the packet that we're talking, we're referring to this as covered.
Yes.
And the motivation for the residents is to obviously. Have invited guests and residents only as the traffic through the subdivision. But you mentioned just a moment ago that the residents themselves have put in a financial investment. In paving and lights, am I correct?
In, in paving.
Okay.
As part of the packet, they, Mr. Huber, I didn't mean to interrupt, I know we're supposed to, but just to clear up so you know.
We'll, we'll get to the applicants in a minute.
Let me just kind of clear something up. So in ten thousand dollars invested.
I think there, there is some conversation, maybe I, I'm wrong, there, I saw that there probably had a plan, but they collected some money that as, as a part of the application that they mentioned.
Okay, and how was that ten thousand dollars to be used?
Probably the paving of the street.
Okay.
It was to upgrade the beat system now. And that was, that was carried out.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's what, that's what I wanted to do. And I saw that through the DRT, and you just mentioned that the fire department wants twenty-four seven access. That makes sense to me, but if there is a gate and it's an automatic gate and there's codes or little clippers or whatever. Why wouldn't the fire department have that access free, freely as well?
So one.
Through the way of a lockbox.
So how it works in different communities that they have a lockbox. Where they give the key to fire or police department whenever they want an access. And if fire department is still, is my understanding, maybe working on that kind of ordinance. To have with it a citywide, but as for the conversation that we had, they said it, they want uninterrupted, uninterrupted access. So that they, they do not have a delay or in case if there is, if there is any interruption in that.
And so I guess I'm still not clear, there's a fire that's, that's happening in Los Arbores. The fire department shows up, the gate is closed. Will they have a code or?
So how this, how it works. There is, in the private owned streets. So if there is a lock, they give a key to fire department or police department, so they can come or key code access whatever they have.
Okay.
They can access the gate. But the fire department did not appreciate that, they want that, that this gate to be removed. Or this gate to be open as, as a sensor base, whenever it senses. Vehicle or any person, it opens. So they prefer that instead of having a key code access or a lockbox.
You also said that the, the land use attorney is. Said that this is actually an asset to the city.
Correct.
The, the street and the square footage of the street is an asset to the city. Uh, and this question might be better directed for Commissioner Hill. But uh, and if I can, well, I'll, I'll wait to ask Commissioner Hill shortly. Uh, I think those are all my questions right now. Uh, let me double check. It's my next question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quintana. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, fellow Commissioners and Director Hussein. I'm wondering, uh, just my curiosity, who's maintaining this road?
The residents are my main control, that's what my understanding is.
There's no maintain maintenance, so there's no, there's no um. Road maintenance, road maintenance agreement. You, road usage and maintenance agreement amongst the, the owners of the properties of the, the lots here.
So you're, you're equating, I, I couldn't grasp the last word.
I'm sorry, uh, so there's not a road maintenance agreement, uh, there's, there's filed a record on this?
Which we do not, actually there, the city and the residents were being pressured for last, I believe ninety or twenty years. That this is a private street, so they were taking care of it, but whenever there is a, an issue with the utilities and infrastructure, city go there and fix it.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, uh, Director. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I got for now.
You, Commissioner. There any other questions from Commissioners? And I can't see Commissioner Casalos very well, so if he raises his hand, let you know. Okay. Director, I'll go ahead and tell some questions off some of the previous. Uh, Commissioners' questions, just for clarification. So you did state that uh, the DRT. And the city's land use attorney are not recommending approval. And from the attorney's perspective, largely because it's an anti-donation uh issue, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then as far as the, of Commissioner Quintana's question. You ten thousand dollar expense, I think that was referenced. Uh, and then I heard uh, mentioned that it was. Mentioned that it was for upgrades to the gate. Not necessarily for road maintenance.
That's correct.
Okay. So the upgrades to the gate. Do I understand that those were made prior to the city, city's approval?
I think they collected that before city knew that. It is a city street. Because they, I think they collected that money to upgrade to a commercial scale because it was probably damaged, so they wanted to have a commercial scale gate.
So to your understanding, the, the upgrades restricted public access. And that is why Director Hubler had required. As a temporary measure to post the code for access into the public street?
Yes, I believe so. My understanding is when they came here for development permit. To develop and change and replace the gate with a conscious scale gate, that's how they, you submit the proof ownership of the, of the survey. That's how the city got to know that this is a private street, not, this is a public street owned by city, not the private owners. So I, so that actually ma, it makes sense that they, they must have quite a bit of money before even coming to the city for developer permit.
Okay, and to your knowledge, no. Only temporary permission was allowed and, and this is the, the time when. We're seeking or, or the applicant is seeking a permanent solution to.
Yes. It was, it was temporarily allowed for last year, I believe, till May and then. Mister, and this actually submitted this application last in February. And it was sitting here in the department and if no action was taken, I'm not too sure. While the previous staff did not bring it to the planning commission, since it's been almost there for more than a year.
Okay. Now. You know, to your knowledge. There is a provision in the code. That does not allow for restriction of public access, is that correct?
That is correct, but the planning director suggested that. If you have put the gate in there, if everybody knows the code, they can access the street, so that actually makes up for the access to the public. You will come here after we come here.
If I may, if I may, that, that part of the code is. Is Article Six, Paragraph B, in case anybody wants to look that up. Then talks about gates not obstructing the public right of way, so that's the particular code reference, correct, Director? Did you, did you get that question, Director?
Sorry, actually, there was conversation, I apologize, one attendees want to make something.
Just for members of the public, this isn't time for Commissioners to ask questions to staff, so you could refrain, we'd appreciate it. So the, the particular code reference that I was siding with Articles, Article Six, Paragraph D. Is that the correct citation for? This particular issue?
I, I have to look at, look at it, but I, my understanding, I think you're mentioning the right art.
Okay. Thank you, Director. And just for clarification on Commissioner Kintana's question, I think. The road maintenance aspect was the proposal from the applicant. Of what it would take for them to maintain the road. And the costs associated with that. And that's what's in the, in the packet, correct? That's the. That's what that references.